Thanks, Sean. Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to the September 12th River Falls City Council meeting. First thing we'll do is stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Kristi, grab your roll call, please.
Bierstedt.
Here.
Bjork.
Here.
Caro.
Here.
Downing.
Here.
Morsette.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Odine.
Okay, next we have approval of minutes from the August 22nd meeting and the August 22nd Board of Review meeting.
I move approval.
Second.
First and second, questions or comments on the minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We have approval of the bills with Mr. Downing.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I move approval of the bills in the amount of $2,935,187.37, subject to the consular.
Second. First and second on the bills, any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next move on to public comments. This is where anybody in the audience has anything they'd like to say, you can come on up and we will, we will, uh, public comments will be at two minutes tonight, so come on up.
Mr. Mayor, would you like me to run the?
Yes, please.
If you could run the timer. I'll give the people a heads up at fifteen minutes, fifteen seconds left.
Okay, thanks.
Mayor and Council, I am Melissa Mimi Abduch. I own Mimi's Cookies and Creamery downtown River Falls and I live in Sterling Ponds in River Falls here. I first just want to give a very gracious thank you to the council for approving our event in June. It was very successful as an event overall and especially for all of the individual businesses who participated. We had a number of vendors that sold out of product because it was so successful and we have received a lot of good feedback, both from businesses and the community at large. We are very much looking forward to August, or excuse me, October 1st event and it is our hope that the council wants to approve all of our requests and so that we can continue to support River Falls and the business community. Thank you.
Thanks. Anybody else have anything?
The word compassion was used a lot by Alderman Caro's public comment a few weeks ago. To most people compassion is best described by the phrase, "Do unto others as you would have done unto you." Anti-homeless ordinances which criminalize the basic needs of the homeless are not by any stretch of the imagination compassionate. In fact, they have been described by courts as cruel and unusual. Denying and covering up the growing problem of local homelessness is not contributing to anything resembling a solution, yet this is all I observe, have observed the city administration doing in the past two years. And there's plenty of evidence which supports that observation, evidence I would love to present to the council were I not consistently denied the opportunity by the city administrator. According to the city's own study, in 2017, 634 requests for help at our neighbor's place came from homeless residents. That amount was double the previous year's request. Nationally homelessness has risen by 20 to 25% since then, with those having serious disabilities experiencing the greatest increase. River Falls has no emergency shelter except Turning Point, which is designated specifically for those fleeing domestic abuse and is typically unable to meet that demand. Vouchers provide very temporary emergency housing for a small percentage of the rest. Mostly those residents becoming homeless are on their own despite the assumption that plenty of resources are available. Your no camping ordinance effectively eliminates even that option. Homeless residents are approached by River Falls Police Department after, and after being provided with a packet of contact information for places like our neighbor's place and Turning Point, they are warned they cannot shelter in their vehicle or in a tent inside the city limits unless they can afford to pay to stay at the city's own camping area. If they're unable to vacate the city limits, they are fined over hun, $100 using the newly enacted no camping ordinance, sometimes even when they are complying with it. Even if this did not violate these individuals constitutionally guaranteed rights and ignore due process, it would constitute an obvious conflict of interest.
Thank you.
Pay us to camp or leave is not a policy.
Anybody else has anything they'd like to say? Come on up.
Would consider.
Thank you. Come on up.
Compassionate.
Goodbye.
Hi, my name is Ayana Raven Benitez. I'll try to fit this within the two minutes, but I'm not experienced at that. Last summer when I spoke with the mayor about a couple of main points of general concern, my first comment was, "I do have evidence." So there's been no mystery. Yet here we are as Nick Caro issued forth a gish gallop of so many logical fallacies, like at least 12 or so that kind of, it's hardly time in two minutes to get into all of that. The city can keep on with the gaslighting and adversarial approach meanwhile. We are clearly saying our concerns are valid, can hold up to scrutiny on the merits, and if allowed to, a genuine chance to be presented. It gets even harder after people are driven out of River Falls and once this camping ordinance went into effect with selective enforcement, they are no longer here to say anything. The city has demonstrated an ongoing pattern of conduct targeting marginalized people without any legitimate or lawful cause, particularly if homeless, but especially if they are black. The city of River Falls is in fact what's called a sundowntown. I've learned, I must say, you know, that now as it isn't all that unrelated. Not at all. Getting to the truth of things is uncomfortable and takes work. I embrace it. What I see the city do is double down and pursue ways to control who can be heard or not, disparaging any real dissent and willing to be quite extreme. They've lost the plot on governance. The city's lost the plot on governance. It's their option to say whatever they like without limit, but unless the members act constructively to address the issues we raise by including us as a primary source, realities of people.
Time has been reached.
Have been, the, the realities people have been enduring will remain obfuscated. I'll end it there.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience?
Patrick Allen. Mr. Caro, you had said some things at the last meeting that I'd like to respond to. Although I can do my best to sympathize with you and your colleagues about what it must be like to have your actions and policies criticized by the public, you're in a position of power and authority. They're just people. I couldn't find any examples of people attacking, spreading misinformation and making claims that couldn't be backed up with available and supporting evidence. The people you are talking about who share these concerns and do mutual aid, outreach and advocacy on their own time become intimately aware of what goes on. Most of them are not in a position where they can take the personal risk involved in speaking up. When someone brings something to your attention, that's a very real and serious problem that isn't going away, is this what they are to expect from you? Even when they go out of their way to find solutions you like, you'll just be instructed to not talk to them? You'll say they have no evidence but won't look at their evidence? But I digress. Of course, River Falls doesn't have a homelessness problem. Only homeless people have a homelessness problem. You say these are people, there are people experiencing homelessness in our community and that they matter and should be seen, heard, helped, that's fine. But are their human rights and legal rights recognized and are they treated the same as anyone else who lives here? Is their right to self-determination a factor? I love River Falls, the contrast of having been embraced by the community while simultaneously put in a double bind by the city where I couldn't leave because of their actions and the harm delays and damage it caused and the ongoing pattern of behaviors. Now we have matters that must be addressed before we can continue. You can't make me break the law, you can't make me act against my self-preservation, survival, best interests or self-determination. And for the people watching at home, there's a report you can check out.
What's that?
Fifteen seconds.
I'm done. Thank you.
Thanks. Anybody else have anything in the audience? No, okay, we'll move on. Next move on to consent agenda. First one is a resolution approving River Falls Business Leaders' request for street closures for Taste of River Falls. This would be for a street closure at 10:00 a.m. on October 1st for Main Street from Locust to Maple northbound and Maple to Walnut southbound and Elm Street from Main Street to the alley. Next is a resolution approving River Falls Business Leaders' request for open container exemption for Taste of River Falls. This exemption would be allow consumption of intoxicating beverages on sidewalk along Main Street, Riverwalk Alley and Veterans Park for the event. The next thing is a resolution approving River Falls Business Leaders' request for noise control exemption for Taste of River Falls. There again, this would be for Veterans Park for the event on October 1st. And the next one is a resolution approving River Falls Business Leaders' request for city assistance for Taste of River Falls. This would be approved request for the city assistance for the event at an approximate cost of $3,500 to the city. Does anybody want to pull anything? Okay. Okay, well, go ahead then.
I was hoping we could have, can we have Mimi come up and answer some questions at this point or?
Yeah, that's fine.
The reason I just wanted to pull, I, oh, yep, sorry about that, John. The reason I wanted to have it pulled because when I read through this, what's the purpose of this? There's not a purpose written down, down saying, "We want to grow awareness to downtown. We want more business downtown," so what's the purpose?
All of the above.
Is what?
So we would like to grow awareness of downtown, to bring people in, to show them all of the wonderful things that we don't just have specifically to the downtown area, but also at our business community at large. So that is why we invite River Falls businesses to participate in a mobile position along either side of the median. In this particular event, all businesses and vendors are River Falls businesses and vendors. So we do not have people from Ellsworth or Hudson coming into town. Like this is just to show our community what we have to offer and in doing so, we help support the growth and the business in all of the brick and mortar businesses as well as the mobile ones that we invite in to participate.
Okay, and then I know it's no packers Sunday that week, so that's nice. Do you feel it's a no-win situation if there's not open, open container? Or could you still be successful that if alcohol wasn't allowed to go up and down the street? And the reason I say that, I look at the police report every week. In over 50% of the River Falls police reports, it's, it involves intoxicants, you know, or alcohol. I mean, over 50%, either driving or domestic abuse or whatever. So I'm just wondering, what's your belief or what yours, what's your thought with if alcohol's not there or is there?
If we were not to be approved for open container in the downtown space, the current decision of our board is that we would not hold it downtown. We would resort to holding it at one of the breweries or wineries. It's our belief that when mature adults are able to casually consume a beverage, they spend more money, they have a more relaxed and enjoyable time. I cannot speak to what the police report showed for post-event on it from our June 4th Taste of River Falls, but I know during the event, we had zero incidences. The two reserve officers that were there, we met with them at the end of the event. They said it was the most boring event that they had ever had to work at. The only two incidences that they had to address were assisting a woman finding her purse that she had set down. They successfully found it and helped a gentleman locate his car that, it was an older gentleman and he had forgot where he had parked. Should this event grow to the point where we are having trouble, that is when we know we need to make changes. We also do not support belligerent behavior, excessive consumption. But like I previously stated, having that atmosphere where individuals can responsibly enjoy a beverage or two across the four hours, it is beneficial to all the participants.
You said four hours is, it's one to five or?
It is noon to four. We've asked for, is when all the businesses will be open. We did ask for open consumption starting at 11:00 because that's when the bars open. So there's no confusion like, oh, but it's already open. And as us vendors are setting up and stuff, we could also have one with us if we wanted to. So that was the only reason for the change. And I also did hear, I forget who was reading the resolutions, but we did not request for Riverwalk to be part of the open consumption.
Right.
Yep, we want it to end at the stage at Veterans Park.
Yep, the back of Veterans stage, yep.
So everything would be Main Street and then that one-off shoot on Elm Street.
Okay, good, and then, so again, what's the length of, that you would have open container that you would want?
From 11:00 a.m. till 4:00 p.m.
Okay, five hours.
Yep.
All right. All right, I have no other questions.
Okay. Well, yeah, let's, let's start with one, start with one, start with one of them.
Okay, well, number two, I, I will move to approve that. In fact, I'm just going to go down all the list and say two through five, I'm going to ask for approval, so.
Okay. Okay, questions, comments?
I would like to hear the staff's concerns regarding the street closures.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think we, our primary concern, the primary concern of staff, which is not my personal concern, so I, but what we noted is just the Walnut to Maple for traffic. Just trying to figure out the way things go with One Ways and that, but I guess we don't have a concern. We feel we can work with the promoter to figure that out, so.
So that's not like a major concern that you have as staff or the staff shares?
It is not.
Okay, thank you.
May I speak to that?
Oh, yeah.
Did you say for on Walnut?
Um, what they had was, let's see.
He said Walnut to Maple.
Yeah, they're closing up Walnut.
No, we're not going to close Walnut.
You're not going to do that because that's.
It'll be exactly the same as in June. So Main Street will be closed, Maple to Locust southbound and Walnut to Maple northbound with Walnut itself remaining open so that traffic can cross to and from Family Fresh, which is how it was last in June as well. So the guards would be put up on Main Street itself, no street closure signs on Walnut. Does that make sense?
Mimi, does that mean that if you're going west on Walnut, you'll be able to cross Main Street then?
Yes, and that's how we had it in June as well.
Okay, and then, but then from Locust to Walnut, you'll have that one block closed?
Yes.
And then reclosed again from Walnut to Maple?
Right, yep.
Okay.
Yep.
All right.
So we did not want to prevent traffic from going mainly to Family Fresh, but also the additional businesses that are down Walnut. But we kept open container within that closed off area.
Yeah, with Patty's and with Emma's you wanted, so.
Yep, and then this, for this event, Family Fresh is also hosting a family fun zone. So in that grassy area, they will have bouncy houses and such. We have a face painter coming out there and I'm working with Ryan Miller because they have Run with the Cops that following week, so he is hoping to have staffed a booth there so we can promote that event as well.
I guess I've got a couple, Mr. Downing, are you done?
Um, for now.
Okay, I guess I've got a couple, couple comments to make or a couple of observations. I, I think I expressed my position pretty clearly last time. I, I appreciate you for owning the downtown, but I just can't endorse the open container. I didn't, didn't vote for it last time. I do have a concern about using room tax money or having the city pay for the fees, the $3,500. I do think those need to be bored by the, by the promoter or the, the organization. The fund that we have, I did some extensive work with the staff to find out exactly what that fund is about and what the room tax does. The room tax specifically points to the fact, I think, that we've got to give that money to a tourism bureau, which is where it goes. And we expend all of those funds, in fact, I think we go, what was it, Josh? $200 negative every year just with the events that we support with that fund. So that, that fund does not have an excess balance in it to support this type of activity. So I, 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 I'm okay with the closure of the streets and the noise, noise ordinance and some of the requests, but I really feel strongly that, that the, that the, the organization needs to pay for those fees, for those costs that we're incurring. I do question whether we need another downtown closure event. We've got River Falls Days, we've got Bacon Bash, and I know that doesn't close Main Street. We've got River Dazzle, we had your event earlier. I just don't want to see us get into the habit of every other week having a, having a closure downtown for some event. So I guess my urging to the council is, is that we, that we consider how, how that $3,500 is paid for. And again, my position is that I would not be in favor of the open container.
Scott, are we able to see a breakdown of what that $3,500 entails?
Yes, we got that in, in our staff report. We got that in our report from staff.
Okay, and.
Then get you on.
Perfect, that'd be very helpful, thank you, because.
That's in the public packet.
Yeah, it's in the public packet. I'm sorry, yeah, I don't want to make it, yeah, it's in the public packet.
Good, good, all right. Um, I must have skimmed through it too quickly. Um, and in regards to the number of events that we have that close down downtown, I believe we're the only event that closes down downtown. River Dazzle does just during the parade, so I think for two hours.
But there's open container during River Dazzle, I believe.
Yes, there's open container during River Dazzle, but the street itself that you're concerned was closing downtown. All other events put on by the chamber are down in the park here right across the street. And again, I would want to reinforce that this does in fact benefit every business that's downtown and our community at large. And when more people are spending money in downtown, that is more tax dollars that are coming in. That is more hope for businesses like my own who, you know, was going to close at the end of last year and which ignited my passion to continue to push people to come downtown and support our businesses because we are a bedroom community. People sleep here and they leave for work, they do their grocery shopping elsewhere and they do their gift shopping elsewhere. And so we're trying to remind people what a wonderful community we have and what opportunities we have here to spend our money.
And I don't disagree with you, Mimi, but I think we get those same residual effects from River Falls Days, Bacon Bash, you know, your previous event. And to be honest with you, I anticipate you'll be back for St. Patrick's Day with some sort of event that you're gonna, that you're gonna want to have the same type of event. So now you're up to three a year and.
So, and I'm happy to respond to that immediately, that we will not request street closures for St. Patrick's Day. We do want to host an event, but there will be no request to close off streets. And your, your assumption that events like Bacon Bash and River Falls Days and all of the other chamber events bring business to downtown, they do not. I do not see an uptick in business on River Falls Days with the exception of prior to the parade and that is because I host a face painter. My tickets, my register sales do not increase because River Falls Days is here because the chamber focuses everything in the event area, as they should. It is not to bring people downtown. Our event focuses on bringing people in the doors of our business community to support the businesses that are here so that our storefronts don't start going empty and which further hurts every other business next to them.
And I, and I agree with you and I am, I am in support of the closure. I am in support of the down, the downtown closure. I just am making a comment that, you know, I don't, I don't want to see this become an every other weekend event type of situation.
Right, nor do we. We are 100% volunteer run. We don't have time for that.
I just, I continue to question whether or not we need open container. Family Fresh is offering a family area. I don't think we need open container there.
Open container is not, their, their grounds are not part of our open container request.
Well, I, I think the overall open container requests, we have in the past, and you know how I feel about this. You and I have talked about this offline. I'm just of the opinion that we don't need a whole bunch more open container events in town. We had a open container request that didn't work out for Cab. I would expect they're going to come back. And I just, I just am hesitant to endorse open container events.
Right, and we don't want all of our events to be open container either. So tomorrow we are hosting Ladies Night Out. So from 5:00 till 8:00, Star Observer actually reached out to me today to make, see that they could have someone come and go through the entire event and take pictures of all the things that are happening within our businesses downtown to do a full-page article on what we are doing down here. We did not even consider asking for open container for that event because we also do not feel the need to have open container at every single event. The difference with Taste of River Falls is that it's four hours on a Sunday. Like in, in our market for Taste of River Falls, our families that, you know, like older adults and maybe families that have young kids that are going to go out to the arcade, but they still want to just leisurely walk around and not take shots and beer bongs and all of that stuff, but actually just have a beverage and have a nice time and meet up with their neighbors and enjoy the space that we provide them.
Okay, does anybody else have anything?
I guess I'll have a couple of things quick. So I, I did enjoy the open container, but it was an open container of Mountain Dew. And so I thought the event in June was, was well done. I thought some of the concerns that were brought by the council seemed to be addressed. Obviously, there are some philosophical differences and, and those are not easily resolved. I think long-term, safe, legal and rare is what we should be striving for when we think about open container.
Agreed.
And, and then within that, I think the other element would be bring us some metrics back that showing that, that it's driving some business.
Fair enough.
Because we get a lot of things that are told are successful or not successful, but without any data behind it, how do we prove it?
Right.
But I, I don't think it's wrong to note that open container does have some challenges with family. But as I pointed out, the last time we discussed this, people are responsible for their own behavior. The server's response, there's a lot of different things that have to go wrong for people to make those poor choices that lead to consequences and we didn't see many last time. But just know, if we do see them, I think the council will probably have more discussion about future events. A larger concern I have, and apparently I've poked at other things in the last month or so, is that we're getting into having dueling entities trying to drive things for the city on, on the economic side when it comes to downtown things. I don't know long-term what can be done to improve that, but this dual thing that, that does come to council and ekes into public discussion, I think would once again be well-served to be res. I think would once again be well-served to be resolved.
Right.
Going forward, because we're just, we're, that's where the room tax challenge comes from and some of those discussions are because we're, we're kind of doing two things here at once. So that, it's not a tack, I appreciate all the people that, that volunteer get it going. Uh, like I said, we went down, we enjoyed it, the kids had a good time. Um, it was kind of hot, if I recall, or at least I felt like it was.
Um, the bar cart was happy for that because he had, they had the, uh, the virgin cocktails. They were crazy all day.
They were, they were, no, I, I, we stopped by it. Um, but I think there's just some, there are longer things here that are gonna continue and, and it would be wise to maybe address some of those. But I'm thankful, uh, thankful for your time and coming here and appreciate your group in general.
Thank you, thank you.
Anybody else?
Yep.
I do appreciate your um willingness to work with the council in the past. I know I had some difficulties getting behind some of the measures that were in front of us, but I think you've proved quite a bit of it, that you could handle it. Now, I like to see the goodwill between the city and your group in the sense of how can we make this work better in the future? And I think what Mr. Morissette said when he talked about um some of those fees, I think trying to figure out what's fair to work with the city as far as who's participating and how they can help be a partner with the city is fair for the future.
Yeah.
Um, I think this is a good step forward, though, and I think, you know, uh, when you look at how difficult COVID was on everybody, it was certainly hard on our downtown, and I think you're helping us build back in that sense, and I appreciate that.
Thank you. Yep, and on behalf of our entire group is, we do want to work with council and we are doing a much better job of working with the Chamber. Um, and, you know, I think all of us can benefit from all working together, and that is our goal. And we appreciate when that happens and we learn when it doesn't happen. Um, and so we can only grow and do better from taking each step forward.
I guess one other comment, oh, I'm sorry, just two seconds. Uh, the reason for my focus on the costs is because of other groups coming in and asking for the same thing. I think we've got to be consistent with those costs and those fees and how we, how we um recoup the, the, the actual cost to the city. Um, and again, we can get those to you, Mimi, for, for you to understand. But um, that's really my desire here is to, is to set the precedent to say, this is what it's gonna cost you if you want to have a, a, a street closure, uh, if you're requesting open container, if you're requesting these things from the city, these are the fees that, that we need to pass along to you as part of that.
Right, well, and I appreciate you not wasting my tax dollars, so.
Yes.
As a citizen of River Falls, thank you.
I'm sorry, I'll yield in this one.
I just wanted to let you know that I am very enthusiastically supporting your requests. Um, I went to the one in June, it was great, it was hot, I do remember that. Um, but I really liked the idea that you guys are bringing the focus to downtown. It's one of the things that made me fall in love with River Falls before we moved here, so I'm really looking forward to it.
Thank you, yeah, appreciate that.
Okay, so we'll take them one at a time here.
Alright, number two, um, I so move it to accept um resolution approving River Falls Business Leader's request for street closure for Taste of River Falls.
Second.
Any other questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Number three, I, I'm moving to approve that to resolution approving River Falls Business Leader's request for open containers um exception to, for Taste of River Falls.
Second.
Any more questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Was it two there? Two, yep, did you get that?
Beer stood and I.
Yep. Uh, next one.
Number four, resolution approving River Falls Business Leader's request for noise control for Taste of River Falls.
Second.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And go ahead.
And finally, number five, resolution approving River Falls Business Leader's request for city assistance for Taste of River Falls.
Second.
Questions or comments?
Well, I, I wish my computer was catching up. Evidently, my update isn't there, so I can't, I can't see the agenda online, but I do think we should amend it. Um, or maybe the answer is, uh, part of that request is for the actual physical placement of different things, so I don't want to vote to deny that, but I do want to recognize that the, that the um, that the promoter would, would uh bear the cost of those, so.
Are you saying to bear the cost to this time or in the future?
This time.
Oh.
To set the precedence for everybody going forward.
So, so you've got a mo, you have a motion and a second.
Yep.
So if you want to amend.
That's what I was gonna do.
So the motion and the second is, staff would understand it, is that we're just gonna cover the costs.
Right.
So if you want to change that, then that would be, you'd have to get a motion and a second.
Yeah, okay. So I will make a motion that we amend the request um and, uh, and ask the promoter to pay the fees as outlined in the staff report um related to this event.
Maybe, because this is something new that was not.
Hold on, Mimi.
Wait.
So, that's my motion.
Yep. We got a first, second? Okay, no first, second?
No, guess not.
So now you've got the original motion as presented, which would be the city not charging. We would, we would take those out of our Business and Development Fund.
Yep, first and second on that, any other questions or comments?
I would like to see us work on that in the future, building a uh fee, a participant fee um that is agreeable between the staff and the city and the council. And I, I think this is, looks good going forward, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, next move on to ordinance resolution. Next one is a resolution, the se, le, le, blah, 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 blah. First, Sean, why don't you come on up and give us, Sean's gonna give us a presentation on number six and seven. So I haven't given the presentation, then we'll go back to the ordinances. Sean from, Sean Lance from Ellers is gonna give us a presentation.
And then did we do like a view thing last time? Oh, yeah, the.
Uh, we'll talk to you later.
I think it might be one of those. Yeah, it might be, what does that say? Oh. The menu to. Oh, that looks awesome. It's boy. Uh, yeah, or fullscreen. There it is. Okay, alright, perfect, yeah.
Thank you, Josh. Uh, I've got a presentation that's going to review the results of the financing for uh two debt issues. Uh, and I'm gonna go forward here. Oh, there we go, that way, okay. Um, uh, you, the council recalled, probably about a month and a half ago or so, we met to discuss the finance plan for this year's uh capital projects. They really fall into two primary categories. The infrastructure investment that River Falls is making in Man Valley or Tax Increment District number nineteen, and secondly, the investment that the city is making into the new BioSolids facility. Uh, total costs are right around twenty-three million dollars. So as you know, uh, for the city, that's a very large uh investment. Now, as part of the process, prior to soliciting proposals on the financing, we did go uh for the general obligation issue, which is the one financing the BioSolids facility and the street sewer and electric portion of Man Valley. We did go to update the city's bond rating. Uh, Josh, your finance director put together a very detailed presentation with help from a number of other city staff, as I know. Uh, and what we did is we sat down for about an hour-long discussion. Number of, of other city representatives were there uh as well. Uh, Josh kind of led the discussion with Moody's Investor Service, and I'm happy to note, at the end of the discussion, even though the city is doing an extraordinary type of an investment this year and, and the bond size is uh of, of a higher amount, certainly than typical for River Falls, we were able to maintain uh the double A two rating level. I would say it's a strong double A two. I, I, we didn't get any indication that there's a weakening in the credit quality for, uh, for the city. The higher or better the rating is for the city, the lower the interest rates on your, on your cost of money, on your debt. I did include on here, I won't go through all these in um, in detail, but it's nice of one part of the report, and I, I included it in the more detailed sale reports that I think Josh circulated to you. They do talk about what do they see as the strengths and weaknesses financially. They're not really weaknesses, they just call them challenges, and I think that's very descriptive for River Falls. Uh, and then they also note, we're always aspiring to get to a higher rating. What would that require? Primarily for you guys, it's more things that are not in your direct control. They like to see uh bigger, they like to see maybe a little more diverse tax base. And you are kind of doing that with an investment in Man Valley to try to get more industrial and commercial is, is to go along with the strong residential base that you already have. And then there, they do talk about what would it be to a downgrade? And the biggest one is a, a consistent and long-term drawdown of your reserves. It's probably the biggest fear that they have, that, that would be a financial negative for, for River Falls. Okay, so again, very good news on that front. And then we did do the two issues, uh, we went out for proposals on those, and that'll lead up to a potential action this evening by the council. The first issue, the eighteen million plus was, again, for the Man Valley uh streets, sewer, and electric portion of that issue. We did get ten bids, which is great to see. Uh, and as I talked with Josh earlier, these are bids from all across the country. So with that really strong double A two rating, uh, very attractive issue, lot of interest in it. Winner was Hilltop Securities out of Dallas, Texas. Uh, again, they don't probably know River Falls uh very well, but they do know you're a very str, strong credit strength and look at you as a good, good investment. The blended interest rate on that, uh, this is a general obligation issue backed by the full faith and credit of the city, just a little bit over four percent, and that rate would be locked in for the entire twenty-year term of the issue. You would have the option of refinancing if you wanted to, the city wanted to, after the eighth year, anytime after that uh going forward. And the bidding was very tight. All, uh, seven of the ten bidders were under four point one zero percent. So a lot of people were interested in bid aggressively. The second financing, the water system revenue bonds, as you recall from our discussion, that financing is for the water portion of Man Valley, and it will be do, done on a, a short-term basis, as we really tried. It's, it's a five-year issue with a balloon payment at the end. So we try to spur the development in TID nineteen in Man Valley, which is really expected to pay for the majority of that issue. Now, this is a little more of a unique financing tool, and we went out to proposals from regional and local banks. Uh, we've done that for some issues in the past. We did end up getting two bids, one of them that was, was a late bid, so it was outside of actually the parameter, but they did give it to us, so we wanted to share that with the council. Uh, the, the bids were, one was at four point seven two and the other was at six point seven five percent for, again, the water system bond anticipation note. So it's, it's backed by the water utility and it has a secondary pledge as compared to your existing water revenue bonds that are outstanding. But again, it was viewed very favorably in the four point seven two percent rate, I think is, is very good for an instrument like this. We, we sell these uh type of debt issues occasionally, and most of them are at or above five percent. So I think this was a very representative, very good bid uh that River Falls uh got on this. And as we mentioned, we're really looking over the next couple of years for that development, TID nineteen, to come up and really raise the, uh, the revenues in the water utilities. I, I know you're, that's an issue that the council's constantly looking at too, is just the water and sewer and electric utilities overall. Now, this evening, what would be needed is your bond counsel, Quarles and Brady, has put together two resolutions. You probably saw a draft of those with the council packet. With the proposals, all of the blanks have been filled in based on the results of the sale uh that I just talked about. And what would need to be finalized this evening is approval of the eighteen million, four hundred and fifteen thousand general obligation corporate purpose bond and the four million, nine hundred and thirty-three thousand water system revenue bond anticipation note. Uh, if the council were to approve those this evening, the closing would be toward the end of this month. So then at that point, the city will have all the fi, funding in place then for the Man Valley projects as well as the BioSolids moving, moving forward, probably over the next, I would guess, uh, year, eighteen-month period, uh, the construction schedule on those. Uh, so with that, I'll, I'll stop here, Mr. Mayor, and if there's any questions that the council might have.
As we go along, we'll ask if there are questions. Well, can I ask one now?
Yeah, go ahead. Sean, I, I frankly, working in the finance industry was floored at four seventy-two, and um that's an aggressive rate that almost looks like they think it's bank-qualified, which it is not.
Correct.
And my, part of me says, do they know that, and part of me says, I don't care. Um, uh, but I just, I, I'm shocked by the four seventy-two. That looks a lot like a bank-qualified rate and not a, not a at-market rate.
Yep, we did double-check on that. Uh, the, it is, uh, again, very good bid uh that we can lock into today, so I, I certainly recommend that. Uh, they, they are, I would say, the Hunting Bank is the most aggressive bidder on these type of issues that I'm seeing right now. So they, I, I don't know what their business plan is exactly, but they are uh looking at these ve, these type of issues uh very aggressively.
They must be sending a lot of liquidity that no other banks are.
Yeah, and I, I do, I should say, uh, the two, I didn't mention this, but the two lo, local banks did express interest that the council uh did put those out to them. I just mentioned, and I think it's partly what you're talking about, Scott, is they, they're just looking at their portfolio, at their available funds, and it just didn't fit for them right now. But they, they both did have appreciation that the, the council.
Yeah.
Was sending that proposals their, that their way.
Alright, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
Um, this is questions for Mr. Simpson and also you, I'm Sean. And in section eight of the resolution, it talks about no arbitrage bonds. Um, referring to the code of regulations, could you explain what that means for what we're talking about today?
Yeah, maybe I can start on that, Scott, or do you want to start on it? Okay, yeah. So you, uh, you're, yeah. Yes, well, so you can't just issue bonds for the sole purpose of taking advantage of the situation where the rate you're borrowing at is lower than the rate you can invest the money at. And that's what arbitrage is, is earning interest up above the rate that you're borrowing. Now, there is ways uh that you can earn that, but you, you can earn it through the normal expenditure process, process of the bond proceeds. So the market that we're in right now, you very likely will be able to earn arbitrage, but you will have to meet what are called the spend-down requirements, and you, you do have to also state that you're not issuing these debt, that these debt issues solely for the purposes of earning that arbitrage. So under the normal course of business, uh, what the city is doing will fit the regulations. There will be responsibilities, though, to make sure that the dollars are being spent on the timelines that meet what are called the arbitrage rules, and we'll be assisting the city to make sure that that happens uh going forward.
I appreciate the bidding process, it looks like you guys are operating from a point of strength, and I think it will do what you're talking about. Would you say there's a projection on that?
Uh, we, actually, that, that's one of the final discussions we'll have between now and the closing is what, what those interest earnings are expected to be over the, the next, you know, depending on the construction schedule, getting an update of those, uh, so that can be factored into the overall funds available for the projects.
Thank you.
Yep.
Uh, so I'll take a motion on uh resolution awarding the sale of eighteen million, four hundred and fifteen thousand general obligation corporate purpose bonds, series twenty twenty-three A.
I move approval.
Second. Questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Hang on, I'm sorry. Christie, can I have a roll call vote?
Bjork?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Morissette?
Yes.
Donnie?
Yes.
Beer stood?
Yes.
Okay, next is a resolu, uh, taking motion on a resolution authorizing issuance and sale of a five million, thirty thousand dollar water system revenue bond anticipation note.
So, or moved.
Second.
Questions, comments? Christie?
Oh, oh, Sean's got something.
Oh, go ahead, Sean.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, I didn't um remind the uh, the council on this. That loan amount, the original amount projected, Mr. Mayor, was the amount that you read. It did get adjusted downward based on the bid that we received uh to four million, nine hundred and thirty-three thousand. So that, uh, to the motion and the second, that would just be the one change I would make, is the four million, nine thirty-three.
Okay, are you okay with that?
Yep, I'll move it to the new number Sean just shared of four million, nine hundred and thirty-three thousand.
Okay.
Second.
Perfect. Uh, Christie, can we get a roll call, please?
Donnie?
Yes.
Morissette?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Yes.
Beerstead?
Yes.
Bjork?
Yes.
Okay, uh, let, next one is a resolution awarding the bid for city hall and public library roof replacement. I'll take a motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion. We approve the bid for the city hall and public library roof replacement.
Second.
Questions? Comments? Uh, Christie, it's you again.
I don't think we need one for this.
We don't? Oh, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Opposed? Okay, next move into administrator's report.
While you're, while you're thinking of your questions, uh, just a few dates, September fifth through thirtieth is the library's book sale. Um, suggested donation is twenty-five cents per item. So you can come lobby the library and get some items and then check out some things in the library while you're at it. Thursday, September twenty-first, six to seven thirty P M is cookout conversations at Wells Park. Uh, Mayor Dan Tolan and the River Falls City Council member will host a cookout on September twenty-first. Enjoy a free meal, celebrate our neighborhood parks and meet new people, get to know your city council. Um, there will be some outdoor activities and crafts for all ages. Um, and looks like some lawn games and other things. So all are welcome. September twenty-second to twenty-fourth is Bacon Bash. Uh, that's in downtown River Falls. Uh, Friday, September twenty-second is four to ten thirty P M. Saturday, September twenty-third is eleven to ten thirty. And Sunday is eleven to four P M and includes uh, a uh, car cruise. On a, a happy but sad note, uh, the splash pad is closing September seventeenth. Happy we were able to keep it open a little bit longer, but it will close at uh, eight P M on September seventeenth and then be winterized um, in, in advance of, of next uh, season. So. Take any questions?
Anybody got anything for Scott? Okay, I just got a couple of appointments I wanna make. I'd like to point uh, Dan Geister to the Historic Preservation Commission through January of twenty twenty-six. And I'd like to point Rob Gormensen through uh, to the Exletorial Zoning Committee, and that is indefinite.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion. We accept your appointments.
Second.
Questions, comments?
I think Dan's a great pick.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.
Hey, did you go to the ABC campus or something?
Did I go?
Go see Tom today.
Last night.
Yesterday. I called Jill and I still haven't heard back from her. So I just, I'm wondering something might have happened that.